This meeting is being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town of Sykesville. Mayor and Town Council Meeting today is Monday, May 27th, 2025. The meeting is called to order at 7:02 PM. We will begin this meeting as we begin all meetings with a pledge of allegiance, and we will follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is public comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
We have several.
Okay, fantastic.
First up is Chris Bushman.
Welcome, Chris. And I will ask that you limit your public comments to three minutes, and please announce your name and your address and topic which you'd like to speak to us this evening.
I'll do my best. Don't get the sergeant in arms to drag me off if I'm...
No, sir. You'll just have to pause and make a motion to extend your time, but yeah, you're good.
My name is Chris Bushman, and I live at 532 Oklahoma Avenue. I've lived there for 34 years, and my visit here tonight is overdue. I've only been to one town council meeting before, and that was probably 10 or 15 years ago, and that's because I was frustrated about something not that you guys did, but the citizens were asking of you. Anyway, I'm here tonight for a simple reason: to thank you. Thank all of you. I want to make sure you know how much you're appreciated, every single one of you. I know this last lecture season was a little weird. We'll just call it that. It's my adjective I'm going to use for it. And it felt to me like you were underappreciated. And so I felt it was important for somebody to come in here and tell you how much you mean to us.
Thank you.
And that means each and every one of you, I know you've done great work, and I don't think enough people do what I'm doing. Maybe I'll start a trend, I don't know. I certainly invite and encourage everybody to follow my lead, and maybe every single meeting, someone will come in here and tell you this. I find myself being thankful every day. Whenever I see Director Shreve's folks driving around, I always wave to you guys. Whenever I see Chief Spalding's officers, I always wave to you guys, and I hope you guys know that when I'm waving to you, I'm thanking you. I'm thanking you for what you do. I retired after 40 years as a park ranger. I served in that capacity and always felt like not everybody appreciate what we did, but most people did. And what mattered to me was that we knew that we were doing something important. And you should all know that you're doing something incredibly important. I mean, I rose through the ranks of that agency from a seasonal maintenance worker through the ranger, assistant manager, park manager, deputy regional manager, regional manager, commander of a special operations unit, chief of law enforcement, assistant superintendent, retired after 13 years as a deputy superintendent. So I have a good feeling for what you guys do. And we always talked about how running Maryland's state parks, 75 of them, was like running a small town. And in my conversations with folks, in particular Mayor Shaw, when he would walk his dog past my house every night, and we would have conversations every night, and I would find out how true that was. I mean, we dealt with everything that a small town deals with: public safety, special events, administrative issues, all the maintenance, the infrastructure, everything. It was like running a small town. And those two things really do seem similar to me even more now than ever. And by the way, kudos on the smash and grab and car theft, because we dealt with that a lot. And I know, and I want to draw a parallel here. You guys might have to make a motion pretty soon.
I'll just do a point and order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could extend the time for Chris to be able to continue speaking.
That's the first.
Second.
Second, all in favor. Thank you, Mr. Bushman.
Thank you. We dealt with that a lot. And one thing that I draw as a parallel is that we put a lot of time into that kind of thing, because those were the places we were responsible for. And so when somebody did that, it violated not the person who was the victim, but also us. It violated the sanctity and the integrity of a park. And the same feeling goes, I know, for a town like this. You feel that the town is violated. And so you put that extra effort in. And I mean, when I watched the meeting last week, and when you announced that, I thought, that's rare to be able to do that. You're incredibly difficult. So you guys do a fantastic job with that kind of work. And anyway, one of my examples, one of the reasons I'm here is because of everything I just said, and because of my conversations with Mayor Shaw in the past, and some of the conversations I've had with some of your officers and everything about what goes on around here, I actually felt like I helped out sometimes. For instance, let's just give you one example. There was a time when the town had purchased an ATV. And then there was a challenge from some folks, saying, "Well, if you're going to ride your ATV around, I'm going to ride my ATV around." And Ian told me about that, and I said, "Well, I'll tell you what, we've dealt with that." And so I provided him with a letter that we had gotten from the Department of Transportation that discussed the special mobile equipment exception to the registration requirement, and that put it to rest. And I thought, "Okay, well, I think I've got to help with that." And then the last meeting, speeding came up. And here we go again, right, with the speeding. Well, we dealt with that a lot. As a matter of fact, I might be wrong on this, but I think I had talked with Ian about radar trailers. We used to use them. Set up the radar trailer, and then down the road a little ways. If you don't get the message then, whose fault is that? Well, another thing we used, and I did talk to Derek the other night about it, was portable speed tables. Not a hump, not a bump, but a table. You go up, and you go down, and you can move them around. So you can target a certain area, take them up when you don't need them anymore. You can even set them, they're sectional, you can set them up so that a fire truck can go through without having to even move them, that kind of thing. Anyway, that's kind of my point here, is that I am going to, at this point, take the lead of what many of you have done, most recently, Alexander, sorry, council member Reese, which is, I'm going to start attending these meetings, and I'm hoping that I can help in some way. Because my appreciation doesn't really mean as much as it should if I don't start contributing. Now, I don't know exactly to what degree, but I think we can all contribute in our own way. And so that's going to be my contribution at this point. And two years from now, I'm voting for you and you. But if you decide not to, and I'm not committing to this, I'm just telling you, if you decide not to, then I will be ready. Because I'm going to sit here, and I'm going to start educating myself more than I did before about what goes on here. I just really feel like the last time I was here was because there was a little bit of anti-tax thing going on, that kind of thing, and I got a little bit of a vibe of that this last go-around. And I just got to say, when you have to talk to somebody about the services they get for the taxes that they pay, my mind always goes to, who do you get? They get you, and they get you and your officers, and they get you, and they get you and your staff. That's what they get. They get people who are dedicated to making this town better. That's what they get. And I think Ian was a really good mayor, you're a really good mayor. I think anybody that steps up to be the mayor or the town council member in this town is going to be good, because you're a good person, and that's why you're doing it. And so I've taken like three or four people's time to tell you that, but I just, you know, like I said, this is overdue.
Thank you, Mr. Bushman.
And by the way, I think I do want to get on the record that I do also appreciate those who ran in this last election, because they did something that I haven't done, which is step up and decide you're going to take that on if you're elected. Well, not everybody got elected, you did. And so here you go. And, you know, I really wish you the best in this next two years, four years, how much you've got left on the council here and as mayor, and I'm here to help.
Thank you, Mr. Bushman. I appreciate you.
Thank you for the extra time.
Very kind of you.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ian Cornelius Rommel.
My name is Ian Cornelius Rommel. I live over at 7272 Norris Avenue. Now, I'm not much of a public speaker, so I beg you guys to bear with me on this one. So for the record, I do work for the Department of Public Works, and I have two minor comments I'd like to make just to inform the public. So with Memorial Day behind us, and we know that summer vacation's just around the corner, I would like to remind folks that when you bring sports equipment or toys or anything like that to the parks, to try and pick up after yourselves. In the last couple of weeks, we've had a spike of, let's call it abandoned property at the parks: baseball gloves, tennis rackets, a whole scooter, and unfathomably high number of lacrosse balls. So I'd just like to advise residents, make sure at least your kids pick up after themselves, especially the lacrosse balls. Those are...
Projectiles.
They're projectiles, yes. They easily hide in tall, thick grass, especially around Burkett Park, Shannon Run Park, the north section of Lanier Trail, and it's not exactly fun to see those break the sound barrier. Second point I'd like to make is regarding disposal of your retired United States flags and Maryland State flags. The last couple of months, we've had a lot of flags getting thrown into the trash. One particularly egregious example was we had a flag that was folded up, thankfully not placed inside of, but it was put on the ground outside of one of our dog waste stations. I would like to notify the public that probably a stone's throw from here, about a mile out on Raincliff, right about where Slacks is, big blue sign, there's an American Legion outpost. They will accept both your United States flags and your Maryland State flags. They have a little, call it a glass sunroom on the side of the building, right across from the cannon in their parking lot. And they have a box there where you can just dispose of your flags. They will take care of everything else from there. But just as a point of, you know, respect, consider doing that. If not, did you, Carrie, did you confirm with the post office that they would take them, or is it just the federal ones?
Just the federal ones and US flags.
Okay, so the post office will also take your...
If I may, Ian, first of all, thank you so much for bringing both of those topics to our attention. There is a possibility that in the very near future, Eagle Scout will be actually creating a depository for the flags, and will have it here on town property. And they'll see to it that they're probably retired.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Brady Goddard? I can't speak English. Evening, folks, I'm Brady Goddard. I don't live in town, but I'm living off of 6887 Sheffield Drive, just down Uprick Road. I will say for record that I am just as well as Ian, a member of Public Works, and I'm going to add on to what Ian said about the flags and the, yeah, pieces of property, and maybe something else. I'll decide on later. Going off what Ian said, with the last comments, we have actually taken these flags up ourselves off time to Legion, again, off of Raincliff and Post 223. And it's, we see it like, good lord, what's all this? And then with the, so please take it up to Legion or the post office down, Carrie, in town? Or...
The fair one.
Oh, yeah, the one down in Edwardsburg, across from Merritt. One of those two, please. Second thing is the abandoned piece of property. Just today, a Cooper found a football, a shirt that would actually fit me, but it's mine. Multiple pieces of trash, and various sort of other pieces of clothing. And we also find water bottles, just being laid around, full water bottles, you know, like the kind that Ms. Girl has. Those exact kind of ones, the plastic ones, metal ones. We find them, they left, and we sit down and go, "Just take it with you." It's a simple thing, just grab it, put it back in your car, or just don't take it with you at all. And I'll leave the third thing for next time.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Brady. Thank you. Good deal. Anyone else?
Anyone else signed up there? How would you publicly acknowledge? I know I think almost everybody received an email the weekend regarding, I guess, just improved communications and examples of how we might be able to improve some of those.
Yes.
So again, we wanted to at least acknowledge that email during the public commentary.
For sure. And if y'all haven't done so yet, I'm sure you'll take time to read that, and we'll bring forth to the staff any, and the same to us, if there's something on there that we all believe would be helpful for communication. So, and I do appreciate the input from that particular resident.
Always struggled with outreach and communication.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is inclusive this evening of the minutes from May 12 and minutes from May 19, 2025. Anyone have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so the motion is made to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember Giraffe and seconded by Councilmember Dyer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we're all present, so no abstentions. The consent agenda is unanimously approved. That brings us to our first item of new business, which is to consider, discuss, Act on Ordinance Number 2025-04, an ordinance to amend the adopted budget of the town of Sykesville for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. As we progress through the fiscal year, several budget categories need to be adjusted to properly account for current and expected revenues and expenses for the remainder of fiscal year '25. This document includes a decrease in revenues and expenditures of $2,092,300. This decrease is largely accounted for in the capital expenditures being reallocated to the upcoming fiscal year 2026. And I'll let Joe take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So as you mentioned before, for you tonight is the budget vision number two. So again, this is as we have in past years. We do basically two budget visions for a year. One kind of midway through the fiscal year, and one as we approach the end of the fiscal year, just to make sure the numbers kind of line up with what we expect to end the fiscal year on. So though most of these adjustments are for capital projects, or, you know, just over $2 million of it is all capital projects, there are several line item adjustments, minor line item adjustments that we made throughout the document. So obviously, if there's any questions that anybody has as we go through these, please feel free to ask away. So we'll start with revenues real quick, and obviously, most of the big changes are there in the miscellaneous category, mainly the grants section. So I think we had just over $1 million or just under $1 million budgeted. We're not hitting a lot of those grant items this fiscal year. A lot of those have been shifted to next fiscal year. Mainly, these grants were the Strategic Demolition Grant, the Safe Streets for All Grant, and a lot of the grants that were associated with the front lawn project. So again, all of these basically shifted to FY '26. So we're not expecting, obviously, to get any of those revenues this year. There's a proposed reduction in the use of ARPA funds, but this is the exact amount that we've already budgeted for FY '26, so we just reduced current fiscal year, because that's already been transferred into next fiscal year. And then we've reduced unassigned fund balance by $40,000, and this was actually a match that was associated with the Safe Streets for All Grant project. Is there any questions specifically about any of the revenue reductions or changes that were made?
Anyone?
Can you just remind me when the ARPA funds need to be used by?
All of the funds have to be expended by the end of calendar year 2026, so...
And is there any risk with this 1.2 million right now?
There is not. So again, it is still under contract with our current project and the South End Streets Gate. We do anticipate all of that work being completed by the end of next fiscal year, so by July 2026. And again, we have a six-month buffer, just in case it didn't run over into FY '27.
And that takes into account other types of projects that are out there. It takes into account weather delays. You have buffers built into your current project schedule.
Correct.
Good.
Yeah, there's still plenty of time. Obviously, no one wants to be out of construction all that time.
Right.
Talk about that a little while, but yes, there's some room.
Thank you.
Dates and calendar are closer than they appear.
They certainly are. So we'll move to expenses. I'll talk mainly categorically about most of these. But like I said before, if there's any specific line item that anybody has a question about, please feel free to stop me. So the Mayor and Town Council section, we are increasing by $5,000. That is to account for a larger donation to the Sexual Freedom Fire Company. Personnel or professional services, we are reducing that category by over $200,000. That's basically where that entire Safe Streets for All project was budgeted. So obviously, if we're not doing that this fiscal year, then we have to take all of that money out of that particular section. Public safety, just to point out that there were lots of various line items that were adjusted in this category, however, most of those are related to grant-funded, let's just call it amendments. And we hadn't quite accounted for each of those line items yet. So that's what most of those changes are within the Public Safety Department. Public Works and sanitation, a small reduction there, mainly because salaries were just overinflated for current fiscal year. We had some anticipation of being heavy employees as we started the fiscal year. That ended up working itself out, and we didn't need to go heavy for a while. So we just basically removed that employee from that category. Within Parks Maintenance, I'm going to publicly blame this on Drew. Since we've hired our Parks and Recreation Coordinator, we've been able to actually tackle some of these low-hanging fruit projects around in some of the parks. That's where a lot of those increases were coming from. It's basically property maintenance and tree care, tree maintenance. So again, there's a lot of those little projects that we were able to cross off the list current fiscal year. Adding $21,000 to the Main Street category, this includes two things. One is a $15,000 contribution to the DSC, directly to the DSC. There was some talk about adding another fundraising event to the event schedule for this year, rather than stressing the resources, both of town staff, but also the DSC. It was my suggestion that we just consider a one-time contribution to avoid that fundraising effort. And certainly, the DSC was happy to agree to that. So assuming that passes tonight, we'll just give them that one-time donation. The other funding that's in that category is $6,000. This is an offset and error on my part, where we actually disposed of some equipment of the DSC. We were under the impression that they weren't going to use that anymore, that piece of equipment anymore. It turns out they did want to use it for, let's just call it, parks. So basically, this, the additional contribution is really just to give them, make them whole on the material costs for what that equipment was. The other two categories are really similar to what we discussed in revenues. Capital outlay is being reduced, and again, this is an offset. Some Cooper Park improvements have been shifted to FY '26. Continuing engineering work for 714 Sandusky or the parking lot, redevelopment of that, and some of the work on the townhouse front lawn. And then, as previously mentioned, the ARPA project is being reduced to move that money into FY '26. So obviously, staff is available for any questions. Should there be any of the specific line items, but staff is recommending to council that the introduction be approved of Ordinance 2025-04 as presented, and to schedule a public hearing and adoption for May 9.
Any questions beginning on...
Did you say June 9?
June 9. You did say, you said May, but yeah.
Well, it's in the past.
Yeah. Any questions from...
I don't have a question, but I do want to make a point, a conversation Joe and I had for next year's budget. As you know, Joe mentioned we were increasing the expense payment to the Sexual Freedom Fire Company by another $5,000 for this year. I would like to task the staff for next budget. I know we've already approved next year's budget, but for the very first revision for next year's budget, to add an annual donation to the American Legion Hall on Raincliff. Joe and I had a conversation. As most of you know, we had Officer Queen's party there Friday night. And while we were there, it just occurred to me, we've never done that before. And I don't know why. But it's a very worthwhile cause, right in town. They do a lot for us, and we've never really had that sort of outreach with them. So I'd like to look at next budget, having a donation to the Legion Hall.
I appreciate that.
Do you have a suggested a number?
I actually came in lower than Joe did, but the thought was somewhere between the, you know, in like the $5,000 range.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I would second that notion. Do you have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, and Councilmember Reese, any questions for staff? Okay.
So I just want to comment more in connection, actually. It was highlighted in the email we got about communication. And the email gave us some areas that we could try and improve on for those who don't have internet access, but also really commended the staff and you, Joe, in terms of the staff reports that you do put together. And I think this is just another really good example of that. So just wanted to highlight that. You know, I know you verbalize it here, but all that you verbalize is also in writing and really clearly outlined in a way that we can come here very prepared, and the community can really know all the details of the thought behind what you're doing. So even though if people are just watching and not looking at the documents online, everything that you're saying is written down in even sometimes more detail. So I just wanted to appreciate that, and thank you.
Awesome. And I'll just piggyback on the email that was sent from the resident regarding communication and public information sharing. Beyond all of the kudos, she actually did offer a few good recommendations with respect to making it more accessible.
Yep.
The information is there, just more accessible to the public. Less hidden. It's never intentionally hidden, but that's the way a web service works, right? It's a couple clicks more than we'd all like. So bringing things a little more forward is all. Any questions regarding the budget revision?
I do not.
So I did, in reference to the DSC one-time expense. So is that the first time that we've done this sort of thing, where we've done a one-time thing outside of the normal annual funding that we provide? Because what I did do was I looked at that $15,000, and I put a price to it in terms of dollars. And then I calculated how many hours that would be, based on sort of an average of, and I made up a number, I didn't track down what everyone's salary is, but it's on a basis of like $50 an hour, it'd be like 300 hours of work. And so I'm just sort of interested in how you came up with this math in terms of...
Yeah, I wish I could say it was as scientific as trying to calculate hours. It was, you know, how much cash were they potentially short because of, let's just say, construction delays on how they could gather rent at their new facility at the South End of Main Street? And this was basically an amount to make it whole.
Yeah. And then can you help remind the public of the ROI that the DSC brings to the town? As I recall, in one of their last presentations, it was significant. And I think, because this could become a controversial issue because of, you know, the one-time nature of it, and it's a little out of, it's different than what we normally do, and that sort of thing. But the ROI that DSC brings, and just as an example, the last two weekends at the farmer's market have just been absolutely fantastic in terms of the draw, even though we have this major parking problem because of the streetscape project, right? But even so, people are still coming from, it seems like, all over the place in order to come in. And when they come in, they don't just come in for the farmer's market. They come in, and they go to other shops in town, and they probably eat in town, and who knows what else they do. And so the ROI is very positive. So us doing this, there is this relationship that happens. If you could just talk about it a little bit more than I have already.
I mean, that's a, you've made the best points. Obviously, the DSC is a valuable partner to the town, and they do an extraordinary amount of work in drawing people to town. Now, that has its issues as well, you know, the more people. Then there's obviously, you know, things that have to be cleaned up in our parks or on our streets, or, you know, it stresses the police department. But at the end of the day, those are good problems to have. Like, these are the problems that most successful cities have and have to deal with. And it's like, you know, I'd much rather be dealing with that than, well, how do we get people here? And the DSC does a great job of doing that with, well, quite frankly, a very limited staff.
Right.
So again, you know, even attempting to account specifically for the return on investment that they bring is rather difficult, but we know they're a partner... But we know they're a partner that we don't want to see go anywhere.
Yeah.
So making sure that, you know, they can continue to operate at the level that they are is very important to just the overall operations of the town.
And then, maybe one other thing I would say, and a lot of people don't read these documents, so I can just kind of bring them back up again, is that in our values in the town, we would like to make the town a destination location. And that's one of the things that DSC does. And so it just sort of further exemplifies the point. And I know I'm laboring on and on in reference to it to a certain degree. But, you know, there's all these folks that have just had all these opinions about things. And I thought that we explaining it probably would be helpful to everyone because it feels like facts get lost sometimes in the shuffle of things. And as I recall, the ROI is that they've brought something like a couple million dollars into the town over the last some years. And the outlay, you know, has been around fifty thousand dollars a year for that period of time. And when you look at it, it's somewhere in the north. When I calculated it the last time, it was somewhere north of eight or ten to one, which is very, very positive.
Well, again, I don't want, I'm not gonna speak for the DSCs. I'll probably get this number wrong. And I think a lot of their calculations are based on just their events that come to town. So it's like, we're not even factoring in the increased business that emergency. Because again, that's information that we don't have access to.
And they don't necessarily just bring events. They buy things for the town as well. So it allows the town to utilize that. I mean, they bought lights for the holiday, correct?
Some of them, yeah, it was a joint project, but yeah. And I mean, you just think of, I know the memorial banners just went up. That was a DSC project. So again, there's, I mean, we could sit here all day.
Every piece of public art in Sykesville is a result of the Downtown Sexual Connections efforts. And their partnerships with artists and scientists.
Well, and if I understand correctly, this is a result of, the loss that they had was a result of our helping them invest in a building on Main Street. And when Julie walked us, when we were able to walk through, the delay was in increasing retail space on Main Street. So what she was able to do in terms of bringing in grants and not needing more help from us to renovate.
Restore the building.
And add space to the buildings.
Yes.
You know, my understanding was when she first took over that building, it would be renovating the apartment and then adding two retail spaces on the first floor. She's added three retail spaces and an office. You know, and the, just the revenue back to the town based off of just that space, you know, was astronomical in terms of what owning that building and having the Main Street presence was going to do. So, you know, when I was reading what you were writing about the fifteen thousand, because they did do such extensive renovations and within historic guidelines, even though they didn't need to for that property, which is what delayed their ability to start collecting rent. It seemed to be like a pretty good investment and a low investment on our part in terms of what it did for the town.
Yeah.
So thanks for raising that as well. I think it further exemplifies the point of why this makes sense.
Right.
But I think it's important that the public hears the justification about why, since it's a little different than what we normally do.
Appreciate that, Councilman Schofield.
I'm gonna go further to encourage you, to encourage them, if possible, to quantify the ROI. If someone says, why did you give that person ten dollars? The answer is because he didn't give you twenty-five back. Okay, I know they can't give a precise answer. I'm not asking for that.
Oh, she can.
She had numbers.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the other, but I mean, I was told there are businesses that.
The other.
Yeah, I'm talking about the entire town.
I see.
Kind of their best guess. We know, we can, they can quantify their own and that should be the basis from which it's brought forward. But, you know, somebody's gonna ask and we can say, well, would you take this deal? And they go, yeah, I would. All right, then it's a great deal.
And for reference, the additional six thousand that Joe was talking about had to do with the pocket park. It was dismantled, stored, but apparently, somebody thought it wasn't gonna be useful anymore, even though we wanted to continue to use it. So we worked out a deal to be compensated for that.
Fair one, sure. Thank you.
And I didn't have any, I don't have any issues with that part.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for staff before I remind everyone of staff's recommendation regarding this budget revision? Okay, so, hearing none, remind the council that the staff's recommendation is to approve the introduction of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash zero four and ordinance to amend the adopted budget of the town of Sykesville for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-four and ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-five and schedule the public hearing and adoption for June ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Keenan, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield. Any need for further debate?
I want to clarify that the ordinance number is twenty-twenty-five dash oh-three, not oh-four.
Thank you, where did four even come from?
Four is written on the bottom.
Ah, well, how did you know it was oh-three then, Council? Council? Oh, it's on the agenda correctly.
Well, I guess we should clarify which.
Which one is it?
It's oh-four.
Oh-four?
So the agenda's incorrect.
What the, it's written. The agenda says oh-four as well.
The agenda has oh-four.
Yeah, my agenda says oh-four.
You know, mine lists two?
That says oh-three, correct?
Where am I looking? It does. Actually, she's, Council President is looking at, yeah, here's why. No problem. We got it, everything is good. Yep, everything is good.
We'll strike the amendment?
Correct.
The motion on the table is as written and as reported and requested in the staff report and as I reported verbally.
Yes.
Is there any further need for questions or debate? Okay, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of the motion on the table to approve the introduction of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four as presented and to schedule the public hearing and adoption for June nine, twenty-twenty-five, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, the ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four has been introduced unanimously and the public hearing is set for June nine, twenty-twenty-five. Here we go. This brings me to the next item of new business. It is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas in nineteen ninety-two, Congress designated the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the United States to celebrate significant contributions to people of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage to the growth, history, culture, and achievements of our nation. And whereas, the month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese people to the United States on May seven, eighteen forty-three, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May ten, eighteen sixty-nine, because the majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrates the achievements of this diverse group of individuals that make up seven percent of the population in the United States. And whereas, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made significant contributions to the state of Maryland's economy in the fields of healthcare, science and technology, entrepreneurship, education and research, real estate and investment. They contribute to all facets of life, including arts, culture, government, heritage, and historic preservation and philanthropies. And whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islander history and culture are marked by a struggle for freedom, equity, and justice prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, and incarceration. And whereas, we, the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville, are proud to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, commemorating these central contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made to our town, state, and country. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville that the month of May, twenty-twenty-five, has been proclaimed as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. All in favor? No, we need a motion. There I am. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Send.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Dyer. Any need for comment? All in favor of the approval of proclamation, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, is unanimously approved. That brings us to our announcements and reports. I'll start with those announcements. The next meeting is Monday, June nine, twenty-twenty-five. We have volunteer opportunities available as a crossing card and on the police auxiliary. If interested about volunteering for the town in these capacities, capacities or any others, please email town@sykesville.net. That brings us to our staff updates and we go directly to our public safety report. I got you. Come on up, chief.
Skipping you tonight?
I mentioned only a moment.
Just for a moment.
Awesome. We're gonna talk about the public safety report covering May fifth through the eighteenth. Surprisingly, there was no questions in advance this time. Quite sure I.
Scientists are baffled, please.
But as you can see, we had a total of four hundred and thirty-six events during this timeframe as well as twelve incident reports, which I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have about.
I do not have any. Anyone to my left, to my right?
Nope.
Thank you.
I did want to touch on one of those. Again, it was Sergeant Lacy at hard at work. Chris mentioned the closure of the theft from auto two weeks prior. And Sergeant Lacy has been working very diligently on the burglary from the Shell Station. And I'm happy to say, he now has positively identified three individuals that were involved in that crime. They came here in two separate vehicles and with a plan to break into the Shell Station at four o'clock in the morning. And they stole one pack of cigarettes and eighty-one lottery tickets, which netted a total in winnings of two hundred and eighty-two dollars, which allowed for Sergeant Lacy to track them all over Montgomery County and Frederick County, tracking down where they redeemed their winning tickets, which provided a plethora of evidence in terms of video evidence and pulling right up to the front in their vehicles. And so thankfully, due to his hard work and effort, we will be placing charges against three individuals for breaking into.
That's fantastic news.
Just phenomenal work by Sergeant Lacy.
Chief, if I may, with respect to the theft from auto and that case being closed and the owner of that vehicle that was stolen stopped by my place over a long workday this weekend. And he had mentioned that he continues to receive in the mail from the MTA citations for red light camera and speeding because it's his tags that are being read. Do you have any, maybe he's spoken with you?
Not personally, but I know Sergeant Lacy is still working on that case as well. We're gonna hopefully be able to track that vehicle down and eventually return it to the owner.
Yes.
But unfortunately, the burglary's kind of taken the front center stage right now. But I know he will eventually try to track that down, but.
From the perspective of turning off those violations for a car he no longer is in possession of.
That would be hard to do, but he certainly won't be responsible for them since it occurred during a period when it's been documented with us that his car has been stolen. But it's probably very annoying to get those announcements in the mail.
I wonder, does he just send that report then into like the MVA?
Eventually, he'll have to do that, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if they'll want to actually turn them off, but he certainly won't be responsible for them.
Okay.
I imagine it's pretty frustrating to get them when somebody steals your car and then they get violations in them that come to you in the mail.
A few a week lately, so.
I'll ask Sergeant Lacy to look into that and see what he can do to follow up on it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That also helps Sergeant Lacy.
It does.
Helps track.
Track where it's going and where it's been and more video cameras and sure.
Could he just bring all of those down to you all?
Might be helpful.
Sergeant Lacy would have the locations where these people.
Yeah, I'll ask Sergeant Lacy to reach out to him tomorrow.
That gentleman has actually delivered them almost every other day.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sergeant Lacy have them all?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Awesome.
There you have it.
MVA will avoid them. I'm sure it's a police report.
Of course.
In about a year or two.
Nah, I don't know. Can't speak to the efficiency of the motor vehicle administration.
Is it on paper rather than electronically?
I just went.
You have to do this on paper, but iris rather than electronically?
Um, sure. In terms of.
Submitting a report to the MTA, to the MVA.
We could send it to them electronically, but they will probably reach out to the victim.
I mean, there's no way for you to pull and say, oh, this vehicle is hot? And if we get a camera, please let us know?
Oh, we get those notifications.
Okay.
Because he's plugged in through MCAC to all the LPR readers.
I'm probably using the networks, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
What were you gonna say, Councilman Schofield?
I was just, I was going to herald the MVA because I went there the other day, scheduled an appointment and it took me less than four minutes.
Hello.
What? First time ever?
Yeah.
When you schedule an appointment, now it is a little quicker.
Yeah. It was great.
Couple more things I'd just like to touch on. It was a busy week for us in terms of events. We had the open house on last Saturday. Yep, went very well. Sergeant Slath poured his heart and soul into it and had a very good turnout. Maybe fifty-six, fifty to sixty people showed up over a three-hour period. But all our partners were there and turned in some medications and gave out some ice cream and some other things.
We're getting a tour of the station again.
Tour of the station, sure, yeah, yeah. It was, everybody seemed to enjoy it, so kudos to Sergeant Slath. Sergeant Lacy, speaking of which, received his honor in front of the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce on the twentieth. Very, very nice for him to be recognized as the supervisor of the year for our department. And I was trying to think how many officers we've had recognized, and I think it's been at least five. I know we had Lieutenant Queen was honored last year, I guess, as the volunteer of the year. And I believe you and Jason a couple of years ago for a lifesaving award. So we've had several of our personnel recognized over the years and it's nice to see that.
Sure is.
Absolutely. And then, as was alluded to earlier, the welcome home ceremony for auxiliary Lieutenant Queen went very well. There was some enjoyable singing throughout the evening. We'll leave it at that.
Thanks for leaving it at that, chief.
They all had a lot more guts than I do to sing in front of people, so kudos to you for that. But I know it meant a lot to Jeff and something he'll remember forever. So thank you to those that were there. And that's all. Oh, I did want to mention one other thing. I don't know if you heard, but over this past weekend, we had, not we here in town, but the county had a tremendous amount of crime, a crime spree. Three different motor vehicle thefts in which they tried to steal a total of five cars and fifteen thefts from auto, mostly in the Westminster and Mount Arrie areas. And thankfully, they weren't here in town. But these four gentlemen from the District of Columbia proceeded to come down here and terrorize a lot of victims. And they ended up being involved in a chase in two separate vehicles in Frederick County, which resulted in two cruisers being damaged and one officer being injured, but they were apprehended. So those four gentlemen will be charged with multiple crimes throughout the area. Does happen all over the place, it's not just here. Thankfully, ours isn't quite that extensive, but thankfully, the culprits were apprehended.
Well, that's a silver lining. Thank you, chief, appreciate you. Any questions for chief?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, chief. All right, Joe, it's your turn. We're so excited to hear about the update with what's going on downtown.
We'll keep it simple, late projects.
Yes.
A quick update on the station project. So I think I'd mentioned either at the previous meeting or just before then that we had submitted information to MHT. MHT did basically send us back a letter, let's just call it incomplete. So they're asking for a little bit of additional information. I don't think anything in the letter that they submitted back to us is detrimental to the project. It just requires a little bit of tweaking and a little bit more explanation as to what they're gonna be doing to the building. There's a few things that were asked for that were flat out not. But again, those are not, they were not mission critical, let's just call it, project. So still an ongoing process with MHT. I know Dante and his team are still working with Carroll County to work through the building permit process. And then they still have one step in front of planning commission where they need to get a site plan approved before they can get building permit execution. So still plugging away on the MHT project. Oh, I'm sorry, the station project. As far as the south end streetscape goes, again, we are still making progress. So something that we have learned is the process by which to make sure the project is gonna be done right is gonna be, is taking a little longer than we'll be expected. So, you know, there's layers to the different concrete that has to go in there. So they have to pour curb and then they have to pour pads and the payers can go on it and they have to pour the border. And rather than doing all of that at once, you have to do it in three separate sections. So again, this whole process is just taking a little longer than what we had hoped. Uh, so basically, what we're telling everybody now is where the target is the end of June to make sure that this is done and done correctly, so that when it's, when it's completed, it's gonna last for as long as it needs to.
The weather's not helping either.
The weather's not helping. That, I mean, that's been a delay, but really, I think, you know, the intricacy of the project and making sure that it's done correctly is, is really something that, that we've come to realize over the last two, two weeks or so. That speeding up just isn't the right way to do it. Um, and we gotta make sure that we continue to do it correctly so that it lasts as, as long as we want it to last. So, um, a little bit of a disappointment there and of course, that pushes back the start to some of the other phases to this project. So again, it is gonna drag it out, uh, a little bit longer, but again, I'd rather have it done right than have it done fast. So, um, bit of a bummer there. Um, the, uh, the only other thing I have is, I know it was cold this weekend, but we did open the splash pad and, uh, there was, uh, still, uh, robust attendance at the splash pad, you know, despite the, the cooler temperatures. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, former Councilman Grassley for taking the, uh, first bucket one last time. Um, I believe Councilmember Reese is already volunteered for next year. She's on it for next year. But again, over the weekend, everything went, uh, went very well at the splash pad, so we're, we're, we're ready for, for another fruitful season, uh, at the park.
Thank you, Joe.
And that is all I have.
Fantastic.
Is there a question?
Sure.
So follow up on the streetscape and the amazing, um, weekend. I mean, we've had two farmers markets that have just, not only are they more vendors, but the traffic on Main Street. Um, I've never seen it, so, um, that busy for our farmer's market. So is there any thought to, for the next month and how we can maybe help or alleviate or add to parking on a temporary basis, um, just because, I mean, it's, it's nonstop. I mean, the, the traffic is amazing.
Outside of a show service, I mean, that would be the, the only thing.
Is that maybe something we could look at or some, I mean, I just, there's gotta be some way that, i- if we know it's gonna be maybe a month, there's something we can look at?
Have we been, um, uh, when I say we, I mean, has anyone from staff been keeping an eye on how used the South Branch parking lot is during?
I, I can say, I, so we tried to park there, me and my family, um, for the farmer's market this past Sunday. It was completely full. There were a bunch of cars lined up. I did take a picture. Um, we had to park under the road. That was all.
Same thing, same thing this weekend.
Okay.
I would say that it's worth the investment to do a shuttle or something during that. Uh, just the, if we have it and can keep it in town and support people getting down there safely. Um, the traffic is, uh, it's, like I said, I've never seen that much traffic during a farmer's market. I think a lot of his people, not only so many more people coming in, but looking for parking.
And it's affecting the residents and the church and.
Yeah.
Should the downtown Sykesville connection maybe be using, um, some of the signs that they use for events to block people from parking certain places that are probably not supposed to?
Oh, we do.
Oh, okay, for the farmer's market as well?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, okay.
The parking down at South, at South Branch, would it be more advantageous if there was like a parking guide? Does everybody park wherever? But if it was more organized, that you could get?
It wouldn't matter, especially with.
The volume is, is huge.
Yeah, especially with the weather so good and the.
On both sides.
I saw that.
But the skate park and over there and the parklet itself, I mean, it's just, there's no space.
That's not the safest way if people are parking on River Road to get to the farmer's market. Like, it's just.
We started a new trend to park in the, like, construction lot, you know, a little bit around.
They're all over.
We were, we were hoping that the work would be done by this weekend and that's, so. And so another month of this is not feasible, so.
I'd love to see us look at a shuttle if we can. I don't know what the cost or, you know, maybe if there's a way to quickly see what we can put together.
Yeah, we can, we can work on it.
And where would you shuttle from? Like the middle school?
The middle school.
And does that require us to talk to the middle school or?
It would. Obviously, anytime we're using, you know, somebody else's parking lot, we wanna make sure they know. Same thing with, uh, Freedom Park, you know, we can reach out to the county to let them know that, you know, I imagine the weekends are pretty busy.
I was gonna say, yeah, I don't know with baseball, like what Sundays look like.
Early though on Sunday, I don't know either.
Yeah, but I mean, if we can look at those kind of sooner rather than later, I, I just don't want to see anyone get hurt.
All options are up too.
Thank you.
I don't even know if the shuttle will be needed the entire time, 'cause what, what we found was, um, so we tried to go at like nine-thirty, which is probably the worst time to go, 'cause, like, people just got there. It was completely full. Um, but somebody else tried to come down, uh, like an hour later and there were, like, people were starting to leave at that point.
The first rush was leaving.
Yeah, yeah, so you might not even need like a shuttle for the whole.
You, you would, 'cause if you drop them off at nine and they hang out until ten-thirty, they still need the ride back.
Yeah, but not till one, maybe.
I don't know.
Well, I mean, the church parking is also until, what, noon?
I mean, honestly, I think at the end of the day, if there's gonna be a shuttle, we want it the whole time.
Just, yeah, just for the event.
For two hours or something like that.
Copy.
Let's trans, some people will be fine.
Thirty-minute shuttle.
I think you should need a comment that, uh, if this is our problem, this is a good problem to have.
Yeah, sure. It's also a good, like, sort of another pilot of trying to figure out how to move people from one spot to another spot.
Yeah, but to be, to be honest, uh, and again, I know parking's been bad and the market's been extremely busy. Even if the parking lot were open down there, I'm not so sure there's.
It's, it might be an ongoing, yeah, it might be something ongoing.
Just when the spaces short and everything would be fine.
Yep.
But it might give us, maybe if we can do a head count on the shuttle for the month, like, it might give us a sense of how many people. At least will give us data versus like, right now, I'm sure our police are not able to count the cars as they're trying to just keep.
Trying to make sure people don't get hit by that.
Correct.
Correct. So this would give us a data point on, um, because it does seem like it's growing and the, I mean, the vendors just seem to be even more impressive than they were last year and.
And actually having a trolley has been an ongoing discussion between Joe and I and the DSC for quite some time now, so it's.
So we could pilot it and see.
Our Sykesville Farmer's Market won Carol's best for farmer's markets.
Fantastic.
Out of the entire county, so that's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
So I look forward to the shuttle for school on Sunday.
I've also noticed firsthand, and it's been reported to me, that, um, the traffic, uh, like people are being conscientious for the most part and being kind and stopping for people who look like they might wanna cross in the crosswalk, which is state law, so, um, so that's good. And maybe because it is so busy, uh, the people are paying more attention. I don't know. Okay, um.
One last question.
Yes, sure.
At the, uh, have you spoken to the county? 'Cause I know they run a shuttle taking people to find out if they've got a vehicle just sitting there going, yeah, you know, we, we don't need it in the weekends.
Actually, Councilman Dyer, that's an excellent point, because I have on my list of to-do, yeah, and also wanted to speak to staff about this this week. But they, they have ceased the, the, right, the, the commute between Westminster and, and here.
Yes.
Um, and I planned on speaking to them about that, because that's hugely inconveniencing many of our residents and.
I was surprised that it failed.
Yeah, well, i- it, they stopped it during the pandemic and that was the excuse. And then they never brought it back. That's right. Yeah, so there must be a vehicle somewhere.
One thing, that's, you know. Well, and again, it, 'cause this has been something that, that has been discussed. Hey, how can we start up, even if it's on a limited basis, uh, you know, that route again, at least the local route down here.
That's right.
Again, at the end of the day, it comes down to money. It comes down to money. But that's my question.
But we're, yeah, we're not the redheaded stepchild. We're part of the county too and, 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 yeah, so. Anyone listening? Okay, that, um, gets us to our council slash commission liaison updates. Um, I know that we, I mean, does anyone have an update? 'Cause I was just gonna jump right to.
Just briefly.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, DSC, um, the Green Committee hosted a native plant chat led by a local former park ranger, Kerry, I'm gonna destroy this name, Cata Potus, on May twenty-first at seven o'clock at the Garden. And the DSC has submitted grant applications for state funds through the Main Street Improvement and Technical Assistant Grants. Uh, I already mentioned the farmer's market and how we're trying to address parking down there with, um, church and residents. Um, and we're focusing on our upcoming June events with a, um, smooth transition as our event coordinator, Bree, is going on maternity leave and we're wishing her well.
Awesome.
And finally, we're, we do have the, um, the Freedom Ring Parade coming up. We're still encouraging neighborhoods to participate in the parade and have their own float and neighborhood showdown contest.
Thank you.
For a chance to win a cash prize.
I'm turning to staff now, so we can talk about the cash prize.
You can talk about it.
Okay, okay. Um, so I'd like to announce that we will be having a grand prize, uh, for, it has to be a neighborhood, uh, submitted float um, to the parade and the, there will be one prize and it'll be called the grand prize. It'll be a five hundred dollar, uh, award, so that, that will cover costs, uh, and also hopefully incentivize people to participate um, for our first, speaking of, uh, pilots, uh, our pilot, uh, neighborhood float contest as part of the Let Freedom Ring, Let Freedom Ring Parade. So, um, excited about that. Thank you.
Very good.
Uh, any other commission liaison updates for?
Sorry, I actually defer to Councilwoman Reese, uh, Reese to give us the update. I wasn't at the Spark meeting.
Right, so we do have an upcoming event. I'm gonna get the date right.
Did you have a date?
No, not this week.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have our first movie in the park, uh, but we also, and it's gonna be Toy Story. And we're also gonna have music in the park. This is June fourteenth on Saturday, starting at five P.M. And the music in the park is, um, students from The Band Shop.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be really cool. So it's gonna be the, the music, um, then there'll be a short break and then we'll get to the movie.
Awesome. I love the music preceding, they'd be on the same day. I'm glad I thought of that. Thank you, Councilmember Reese. And then we move on to, um, the election of Council President. And for the edification for the public, um, the role of the Council President, as per Town Charter, Article Two, Chapter Eight, the Council shall elect a Council President from among the Council members who shall act as Chair of the Council in the absence of the Mayor. And then furthermore, as per Article Four Finance, Chapter Forty-seven, all checks issued in payment of salaries or other municipal obligations shall be prepared by the Treasurer and signed by the Town Manager and shall be countersigned by the Mayor or Council President in the Mayor if the Mayor is unavailable. Um, I've also been known to request of the Council President stand in representation of the Council, um, or myself at social, uh, engagements and plan to do more of that in the future, as well as, uh, the current Council President has, um, joined me as a second, uh, represent, Representative of the Council at MML, uh, related gatherings and, uh, as well as county and other state level meetings, response, meeting responsibilities. So those are the types of things that, uh, that, that are inclusive of the Council President's role. Um, so that brings us to the nomination of, uh, Council President for the next two years. And I'd like to nominate Councilmember Anna Carter to serve, uh, another two-year term in that role and ask for a second.
A second?
Thank you. Um, and now I have to ask Anna if she accepts. I'm sorry. If Council, Councilmember Carter accepts the nomination.
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you. And now I'll call for a vote, uh, all in favor for a two-year term to be held, um, beginning this evening uh, as Council President with Anna. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that makes Councilmember, again, Council President Anna Carter for two years.
Thank you. Oh, I'm staying.
That's probably cool.
Yes.
Thank you. Um.
I'll come.
So, that's true.
It's an abstention, not a no.
So this then brings us to our next item on the, uh, on this part of the agenda where the council liaison positions are assigned. And, um, I would like to note that it, with the vacancy at the Historic District Commission, uh, with, uh, former Councilmember Mr. Grassley, uh, and his, um, stepping down from the council, that leaves a vacancy and I'm going to ask Councilmember Giraff to fill that seat on the Historic District Commission, thereby leaving a vacancy at the, uh, Sykesville Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, liaison position. And I would ask Councilmember Reese to do that for us. And that makes perfect sense, right? And then, um, I'd ask that Councilmember Schofield remain on the Planning Commission and, uh, that Councilman Keenan remain as the liaison to the Downtown Sykesville Connections Board of Directors. And, um, I would actually like to request, uh, that Councilman, uh, Dyer uh, fill a position, uh, liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And, um, that is where we leave off. I believe that's everything. Um, any further comments, questions, or concerns for the good of the order regarding this matter or anything else?
Just briefly, I got, during the meeting, I got a notification, Joe, you need a microphone closer to you apparently, 'cause you sometimes come off as garbled. So, so somebody who was watching live.
Just my national speech.
Somebody who was watching live sent me that text, so.
Okay, well, I'll have to, um, read back the transcripts then for everybody next meeting for one, just, just Joe's, Joe's parts. But we do need to get your mic if that's the case. Most of what you say is important, so. Thank you. Um, and thanks for the call in. And, uh, any other comments for the good of the order? All right, then, hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Fantastic. Uh, thank you. So the motion to adjourn, uh, is Councilman Reese and seconded by Councilman Dyer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are turned to eight oh seven. Thank you, everyone, for attending and for, uh, for calling in if you have done so.